You all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, equal and civil, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public participation process. Members of the audience are welcome to make comments at the time designated on the agenda. Please register on a sign up sheet and limit your comments to three minutes when your name is called. Out of respect for all individuals, please refrain from personal criticism in an open forum. Policy 167.3 for more information. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pam, support by Tanya. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion pass. Dr. Cooper.
Yep, we have a special guest here tonight, Mr. Ryan Harp, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, and he is going to give us an overview of the special ed programming here for Allendale. So, Mr. Harp, if you want to step up to the podium, that would be great. Okay. Mood lighting, I like it. Little ambiance.
Well, thank you for having me. As Dr. Cooper said, my name is Ryan Harp, the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education here for Allendale Public Schools. With me is Heather Kennedy. She is our Special Education Secretary. Both Heather and I started in the year 2022-23, so not so very long ago, but what we wanted to do today was to present to you the different highlights and different areas that we have grown in as a department and as a team over those past couple of years. Oh, you got a click, alright. So, here's a quick overview of the areas I'll be presenting to you. First is the different special education eligibilities or ways that students qualify for special education. Then, special education programming and services that we offer at APS, special education compliance and results, and to wrap up, inclusion opportunities at Allendale Public Schools. And there will be a two and a half minute video at the end that kind of highlights the co-teaching being done across the district. So first, the special education eligibility areas. Below are all of the different eligibilities for special education. Students found eligible for any one of these areas, and there's 13 different areas, would then receive what's called an individualized education plan or an IEP. In the IEPs, they then outline what programming, services, accommodations, and goals the students will need to be successful. Currently, Allendale has 329 students with IEPs in the district. So when students are found eligible for special education, the IEP team looks at a couple things. And first is, what programs are needed for a student? Allendale currently offers the following special education programmings, and to the right you'll see the number of staff for each program. We have an early childhood special education program, which is also called ECSE, at our ECC building. This is for students aged three through five who have an IEP, but also that the students have more intensive needs. Students of any eligibility area can qualify for the ECSE program, but again, it's for students that have more significant leads, because it's not pairing students without disabilities with students with disabilities. It's purely special education. We also have programs for students with autism. We have an elementary program, which is located in our Evergreen Elementary Building, and that is for grades K through two. And then we have our intermediate program, which is located at Oakwood, and that's for grades three through five. Finally, we have resource programming, and this is the most common and popular way of providing programming and services to students. It's for students that, again, can have any eligibilities, and for students grades K through 12. Through this model, students then receive either push-in or pull-out instruction from a special education teacher to work on their goals and objectives. Special education services. So students could qualify for special education programs if found eligible. They could also qualify for special education services. Here are a breakdown of the different services and service providers that we have at Allendale. The number to the right is the number of staff in these roles. So that give you guys a minute. Okay. Compliance. So unfortunately, special education is known for compliance. It's a huge focus from the federal government and state government. When I was hired in 2022-23, Dr. Cooper let me know, it just so happened to be the year that Allendale was being audited by the ISD for special education. They were going to look at our special education processes, procedures, and documentation. This included auditing student IEPs at every grade level, reviewing the READ documents, which are review of existing evaluation data documents, and then auditing the eligibility recommendation documents. To clarify kind of what those mean, READs are documents which are used when considering a special education evaluation. So let's say a parent were to request a special education evaluation, or the team at school, you know, decides we need to move to a special education evaluation, they would have what is called a READ meeting. And in those READ meetings would be summaries of file reviews done on students, staff input, staff that work with the students, that have worked with students in the past, and then any data. Sometimes there's outside diagnosis, outside reports, and that is all combined into this READ document. Eligibility recommendations are done after the special education evaluation is completed. These are very complex reports. They include, again, documentation on the reviews of files, but also parent and teacher input, observations that were done by staff, and then any and all evaluations that were completed by our evaluation team members. These documents are also, can you go back? These also are very important because they make the recommendation on if a student qualifies for special education to receive an IEP or not. Since the audit in 22-23, I, our staff, I could not be more proud of them. They have been very receptive to training, processes, procedures, and all of this has resulted in substantial improvements that you'll see below. So if you can click on the link, please. This document coming up, if you can scroll down just a little bit. It's hard to read, but it's from the ISD. And so the area of, the red areas where Allendale scored for the first audit in the beginning of 22-23 school year, that black line across the middle is the compliance line. That's where we want to be at. And you'll see that in the 2025 audit, which was done just recently, you'll see that Allendale is at or above compliance in the vast majority of areas. One of the paragraphs that I'm very proud of for our team is what Allendale wrote right there, or what the ISD wrote right there, is that we grew in 15 of 22 domains, which is about 70%, and that at the bottom, this is an incredible achievement and should be celebrated across the district. If you scroll down a little bit. The READ documents. If you see there are areas that are not READ, that just means that in 2022-23, these were not areas on the rubric that can be used, but were added on since then. Again, the dotted line is the compliance line, and you'll see in the black of where we're currently at. We are above compliance significantly in every single area now for the READ documents. And then you can scroll down. Lastly, the eligibility recommendation documents. Again, you'll see the RED. Please ignore on the far right that last column, which is called Plaf Summary. That is a part of an eligibility recommendation that most districts do not do, and we do not do it. So there should be zero scores for that. I don't know how they got any score for that. But again, you'll see for the areas that we do do, which is every single other area, our scores have improved dramatically over the past couple of years, and we're either at compliance or significantly above them for all areas. So that was one section of compliance. And again, the progress being made is incredible, but it is due to our staff. I can't preach that enough. Our staff have been so open, they've been like sponges, and we've been able to make these great improvements. And these improvements are vital, because you're talking about students. When you're doing an IEP, you're making basically a blueprint for how you're going to service that student. If you are not doing that correctly, then you're sending the student down the wrong path. So we need to have these documents as compliant as possible, and we're able to do that now. Can you scroll to the next slide? The last area of compliance that we have are these MDE, special education determinations. So determinations occur annually from the state and the ISD. What the ISD and states do is they look at different state performance indicators, as well as results of state assessments, and various other data measures. They then provide a determination rating in two areas, compliance and results, and then overall, they make a determination rating. There's three ways a district can score. First is meets requirements, which is the highest score you can get. Second is needs intervention, and then third is, second is needs assistance, and third is needs intervention. I'm pleased to announce that for the year 2024 and 2025, we are at the highest level of meets requirements. The data to determine these is based on the previous year's data as well. So then if you look at historically where we've been, we were at the needs assistance level for two years, and now the past two years, we are on the right track, and we're at the meets requirements or the highest level. One thing that I think is also key to this is that the area of compliance this year, the determination scored us at 100%. And there are so many different indicators that go into that. To score 100% is remarkable. And for results, we scored at 75%. And that is looking at how students participate and perform at state assessments. So that's a lot of work done by our curriculum directors, our principals, our gen ed teachers, and special ed teachers. Inclusion. So while compliance was a large focus, based on what the state and the ISD were telling us, that those are areas we needed to improve on, another focus was on inclusion. We have started or enhanced multiple programs and services over the past year to support inclusivity with students with disabilities. The next few slides and video are going to focus on these. First, we have LINKS. LINKS is a peer-to-peer program. It's a student club, and it partners students with disabilities with students who do not have IEPs or disabilities. And as groups, they work on a variety of different things that can be academic and functional, as well as just plain out fun. And what happens as a result of this is students become and build relationships with each other. These relationships promote inclusivity, but they carry over into the school day. So a lot of these activities occurring outside of school, but then you see students hanging out during lunch, you see them hanging out in class, in the hallway, and that's just incredible to see. You'll see our participants of students for each building that are participating in LINKS right now. Here's just some pictures of LINKS. One other thing I want you to notice, if you can, please, is you cannot tell who has an IEP and who does not. And that's what we want. But what I can tell by looking at these pictures is everybody's engaged, and everybody's having fun. So if you can build relationships, learn from each other, and have fun at the same time while being engaged in activities, LINKS is being done the right way. Some more pictures. Okay. Co-teaching. Co-teaching is very important because it is the most effective way of providing special education programming, because it does not pull students from the general ed setting. Co-teaching is when there's a special education teacher and a general education teacher working together for that class period to provide instruction. This requires a lot of work for it to be successful. Joint planning is one of those things that are very important, and our principals, I have to give them a lot of credit, because they've been able to make that happen for many of these co-taught teachers. That way, the teachers can meet with each other, and they can talk about what they're going to do, they can plan it out together. Because for several of these special education teachers, the topics are not areas that they might have much knowledge on. So these planning periods are extremely important. There's six different models of co-teaching. I won't bore you with what each of them are, but in the slideshow coming up or the video, you're going to see that the different types that exist. And we have co-teaching existing in Evergreen, Oakwood, the middle school, and high school. Lastly, we have unified courses at Allendale High School, and we are very proud of these as well. These are co-taught classes. However, there is a difference. These courses also incorporate LINKS and what we're doing in LINKS, and bring that into the classroom. These courses are at the high school. They are for credit courses, and students work with each other, they work with the teachers, they model for each other. There's a special ed teacher there to help modify as the gen ed teacher teaches, and together, the students are able to really succeed and grow. And so right now, we have universal foods and nutrition, which is brand new. It just started this semester, and last year, we started universal PE, and hopefully, we'll be continuing to be able to build these classes. And last is the video that just kind of highlights the different co-teaching that I talked about. We did not know which students had photo releases, so the students are all in the back. So the special education teacher is sitting down at the table while the gen ed teacher is providing more instruction to other students. And that's it. So thank you, Dr. Cooper, and our Board of Education for all of your support with this. One thing I do want to highlight real quickly as well is there is somebody very special that's helped out a lot with inclusion in this room, and that's Jennifer Blaha. She provides a weekly after-school program for students with disabilities called Goofy Gamers. She dedicates her own time and effort into that, and that not only encompasses functional and daily living, as well as academic skills, but into an extremely fun environment where students really enjoy going. Jen, how many students are currently participating in that?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one this year, so it's pretty remarkable. So thank you to her, and thank you again to the principals, administration, and Dr. Cooper and board. Any questions?
You said that you're hoping to expand the unified classroom?
It'd be nice, yes.
Is there other programs out there, schools that have some of that?
Yes.
Stuff out there?
Yep, yep. And so what we're doing is we're kind of partnering up with different districts like Zeland and the other districts in Kent County that are having a similar model. Because we just started unified program, unified foods and nutrition right now, we're kind of waiting a little bit to get that all off and running, and then hopefully building on off of that. Yeah.
And just for a little backstory on that, you probably remember a couple of years ago, you were asked about doing the Unified PE course, and the board approved that. That was a new course, and so it needed board approval. The Unified Foods isn't a new course. It was just a matter of the way we scheduled it, and so we didn't need to bring that to the board, but we knew from what your vote was on the Unified PE, there's a lot of support for those types of classes for our kids. And I remember our previous board president, Mr. Mango, talked about his son being involved with us as a helper, and how much he got out of that. So it was a great programs for our kids.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'd like to share something before Ryan steps away.
Yeah.
Just this is a little bit of serendipity. I got this email this weekend. This parent wanted to share that Ryan Harp has been the most helpful, caring, and considerate special education supervisor she's ever met. This parent has seven students in our district, ranging from first grade to 11th grade. She explained that some of her children receive special education services from our district. She emphasized that Ryan has been very patient, supportive, understanding, and addressing her concerns and supporting her children's educational needs. She shared that she's happy with the services that they are receiving at APS, and she knows that this is a big part because of the support that Ryan has provided to her. She mentions that her children have attended other school districts, and her experiences with other special education supervisors were not nearly at the same level of support that she has found here with APS and with Ryan. And I was glad that I got this this weekend. The timing was perfect.
Thank you.
Ryan, we just appreciate you a lot. As you can see, the growth in our programming. We've come a long way. When I started here, we only had a special ed director for two days a week for several years, and then it went to three, and then it just went full-time when Ryan came in. And so you can see the difference of having a great administrator in there makes for our kids, so.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. We appreciate you, and Heather, we appreciate you too, because we know behind every great administrator is an awesome administrative assistant, so.
Yes, she's the best.
Alright, thank you, Ryan. Alright.
Discussion item B, therapy dog presentation.
I'm not sure who's going to take the microphone. Is it the little guy on the floor back there coming up, or? Yep, we have Mr. Ball. Yeah, we have Mr. Ball, our Evergreen Principal, and Mrs. Weirzma, who is one of our care providers. Is that the official title now?
Care coordinator.
Care coordinator, there it is. Man, so close.
Can I just email this to you? Click it up here. So if I can get that, I can see better if I like that.
For her to go through the slides from the voting board. Does anyone need to do that?
If not, I'll squint and I'll top it up.
Not wrong. I'll see your email. So who's our guest here with us tonight?
This is Coco. Coco is actually part of our visiting Paws program at Paws with a Cause. She is a four-and-a-half-year-old Lab Golden mix. She is, I say that she is a Black Lab that identifies as a Golden, because if anybody has Golden Retrievers, she has the personality. So she has been working with me for about two years now. We go out into the community, to businesses. Tonight is a little bit different in her role. Normally, her job is to go and greet everybody. Today, I have treats so that she is with me and not going and greeting everybody. But just as an example of what a facility, it is the same end product, that role, that social emotional role that the dogs play is very similar both between a facility dog and a visiting Paws therapy dog.
Thank you. Alright, I'm going to try and tough this out, so. Alright, just a little background from how this all started. As many of you know, we lost a student, Jackson Fitten, last year. I believe it was November. So I want to give the high school credit. They did an amazing job reacting to that situation, and just responding to the students and the staff and all of that. But because of that event, we spent a lot of time, the mental health committee, with Audra in just recapping, you know, how could we, as a district, support her in another situation like that? Where did we, I don't want to say fail, because there was no failure, but where did we lose support? Where can we step in? And what went well? And so we really dove deep, and through those conversations, I believe Rachel Vargo was her secretary, and was very involved with Paws with a Cause. So she had conversations with me on the side and just said, you know, other school districts are using Paws with a Cause dogs for support like this. You know, when we look at how we're going to set up policies and protocols around situations, how can we incorporate a dog into that? So that started some conversations. Meanwhile, Doug and I, for the last couple of years, have really been looking at attendance, and how do we help our current kids? And so he had learned other schools using dogs to use them as chores, tasks that kids can come in, they're excited about. So, you know, if there's attendance issues, those are motivations. I got to be there for the dog. I got to walk the dog outside. I got to feed the dog, all of that, and saw school attendance improve with kids like that. So we kind of discussed that. I would spend some of the summer doing a lot of research and digging into this. So that led me to Kelly. Had many, a big, long conversation with her, along with other many conversations with other school districts, and just the benefits of what Paws with a dog, or Paws with a Cause can do for a school district. So there is a one-minute video that we're just going to start with that Paws developed, and I think it gives a good gist of what we do. Thanks. So that's just a little clip of another school that has one. But so, could a dog really make a difference in a school? Why a facility dog? This is one of Three Rivers Community Schools' dog, a little cute little picture. So benefits of dog to mental health. The simple act of petting animals releases an automatic relaxation response. Humans interacting with animals have found that petting the animal promoted the release of serotonin, prolactin, and oxytocin. prolactin, and oxytocin, all hormones that can play a part in elevating moods. It lowers anxiety and helps people relax, provides comfort, reduces loneliness, increases mental stimulation, can provide an escape or happy distraction, and may help break the ice. So benefits of facility dogs in the school, we'll just kind of run through it. It's increased motivation to learn, increases school attendance, boosts in confidence, lower learning anxiety that can lead to increases in reading and writing tasks, and improved relationship with peers and teachers. So this is, we're gonna skip through some of this, but Lark is a dog that Genesee Public School uses. And if you skip through the next couple, there's just, who is Lark? He works with them. If you skip through a couple quotes, these are just quotes from Genesee Public School, either workers, staff, or students. "It made me feel good and not sad about being at school. I was happy to be at school when I got to be with the dog." That was from a third grader. One of the staff said, "Children can't be angry and compassionate at the same time. Having a facility dog increases opportunities for compassion and connection, and those relationships are so valuable." So we, I'll send this out to the board, but there's many, many, we, we don't have to read through all of them, but there's about 10 of them on there, just through different things. So if you skip through those, Doug, we'll come up with. This is Paws Mission, same thing. We don't have to go through all of this, but I did want to add that. So when you do spend time, if you look at the PowerPoint, you can really dig into what their goal is and what the mission of the dogs are, so there's about three pages of this. And then Evergreen Paws Dog Planning. So this is the heart of what we are hoping and to look at. So proposed building and future handlers, we're looking at Evergreen Elementary. Our handlers will be trained, handlers through the Paws program. We're looking at both social workers, our special ed social worker, Bill Patio and Grace Weersma, and then I would be a handler, the family care coordinator. My role would do more with the attendance and the chores, and also providing relaxation and nap times. The special ed and the general ed social workers would use them more into going into the classrooms, responding to behavior needs, or helping with groups. Evergreen Facility Dog, our goal, provide social emotional support for both students and staff, enhance positive culture within the school, and positive impact student behavior, grades, and attendance. So the logistics, the facility dog would stay with a trained handler throughout the day at all times, will have a schedule just like all staff, will visit requesting classrooms, will provide tasks or chores for students to earn as a reward, and will assist countywide crisis teams when requested. So what that would look like, if we do have a critical incident, episode at our school, or if Coopersville, all the Paws dogs kind of work together. So we would, if Coopersville had an incident, we would take our Paws dog over and respond to anything that they had, and vice versa. This is just a sample, facility dog schedule. I won't read through it, but get there in the morning, greet students in the hallway. One of the things that I feel would really be beneficial is, through the last couple of years, we have students with so much anxiety at the beginning of the day that it's really even hard for them to get through the doors. There's multiple times they, they're spending, you know, 10, 20, 15 minutes either out in the cars with their parents not wanting to let go, or in the office where they don't want to go to the classroom. I could really see a dog benefit those situations where not only the calm, bringing calmness to the student, but also if the dog, or the student got to walk the dog into the classroom, that would just give them a little benefit to get them from point A to point B, so. Just different things that they could get into the classroom. One of the things that we really have to look at is where does the dog stay at night? There's a home handler responsibility, and Paws has a program where they train home handlers. So every school that I have talked to has worked and dealt with this in a little different manner. We have a third-grade teacher that would like to take this responsibility. We also have a couple backups that said if it didn't work out with her, they would like that responsibility. But they, this third-grade teacher would be fully trained. She would have the responsibility of bringing it to and from school every single day. And I attached MOU that we don't have to look at, but Coopersville provided me theirs. And just really, they laid out every single detail for the home handlers, like whose responsibility it is to get to the vet, whose responsibility is to pay, you know, for the groomer, all of that stuff. And how we see it is that even though it's a school dog, we would pay for the initial cost of the dog. But after that, if we work it out in the MOU, that it's a responsibility of the home handler, so. You can skip to the next one. Okay, who will pay for the care of the dog? Like I just said, the initial cost of the dog is $10,000. I'm looking at grants and donations. I just applied to a big grant and have talked to them, and they feel very positive that that grant will go through. I've talked to different programs in Allendale Community and different businesses who all said that they would support this in a way that I think I'm pretty close to the $10,000, if not over the $10,000. Paw estimates $3,000 yearly upkeep. Like I said, if we work that in the MOU, that would be the responsibility of the home handler. But I also would support the home handler in looking at vets and grooming agencies. And Coopersville, Genesee, and Howland have all said that area vets will do a very, very discounted cost for any, any upkeep with the dogs. So I would work with the home handler to have those conversations with area businesses. So those are other school districts that I have talked to or emailed about. Coopersville started with one, they're now up to four dogs. Genesee's up to three dogs, Kinnawood just expanded, they just started and are at two dogs. So the social worker at both Coopersville and Genesee said that they don't even know what their building would be like before the dog. They would never, ever want to go back to this. So I just thought that was a pretty good testament for it. One of the questions, what if the home handler leaves Evergreen? And I just put this in there, we would work that out in the MOU. Both districts in the other, Coopersville and Genesee, said that they did a yearly prorated. So if, let's say, teacher left in five years, through the MOU, it's clearly stated that if she takes the dog and it's not, no longer the school dog, she would owe the school district five grand. If she left after six years, it would be four grand. So we could state it where we would try our best to have another handler, but if it, if it came down to it, it would be under this contract, so. Students and staff who are allergic to fear dogs, we would send out a safety plan survey asking if they're allergic or if they have a fear of the dog. We then would contact the parent if they said yes, and just work out a plan that that dog would never be around that student, or for whatever reason it went into that classroom, we would work with the teacher to remove that student or however. But we would be fully aware of that and respected. Insurance is one of the pieces that I'm sure that the district is worried about. I don't have a lot of information, because I don't know what the school insurance is. The other district stated that whatever that they already had in their district had covered some kind of facility dog. So that would be something that the board or Dr. Cooper would have to look into. I also talked to them that it might be a good idea that the home handler also put in additional pet insurance coverage, and that's something we could discuss if we want to put in the MOU or not. So just the next steps, if the board approves, we gather the necessary paperwork with Paws and work with them on the agreement. I would secure the fundraising and donations. We would start the home handler training and work through the MOU, and we would work with Doug and Dr. Cooper on that. And then we would start the facility handler trainings with the social workers, obtain the right agreements with the local vets and grooming services, and then send out the survey to parents. And that is pretty much it. I tried to think of all the questions that could be thought of, but I'm sure there's some more out there. Again, I'll send the PowerPoint so you guys can look at it at a deeper level, but if, do you guys have any questions just off the cuff here? Or for Kelly who's here?
I have questions. No, you would have to fight me for it.
They are, one thing we did not say, they are three-year trained, is that correct?
They're typically about two years old when they're placed.
Okay.
So all of our dogs go through the same training. We, for those of you who may have heard of us before, we've been around for about 50 years. Up until about seven years ago, we were strictly assistance dogs. We are ADI accredited, which is Assistance Dog International. So all of our dogs, facility, visiting paws, our detection dogs, our assistance dogs, they all, for the first year and a half of their lives, they go through the same training with the mindset of this is going to be an assistance dog. So the obedience, the general socialization, all of that is with the mindset that this dog is going to become an assistant dog. Dogs just like people, we all have different personalities, and we are all made for different career paths. Some dogs are made for assistance dog work, some dogs are a little too social and are made to become facility dogs, some, excuse me, some are, you know, they, they need that purpose, they need that mission, those are the ones that become the detection dogs. They will not stop until they find whatever it is that they're looking for. So we, once they have come back, let me backtrack, they're with a foster raiser for the first year of their lives. That foster raiser is taking them out into public, they're taking them to church on Sunday, they're going to restaurants, they're going to airports, they're going where to work with them, trying to socialize them, give them that well-rounded start. Then they go into our prison program, they're in our prison program for six months. We work with seven different prisons across the state of Michigan. There are two inmates for every one dog, and so they are getting 24/7. They're up-leveling that level of obedience, starting to work on that core behavior to be, to then turn in and start working on the task work, to become, excuse me, become an assistance dog. So the first year and a half of their lives, they are truly in training to become an assistance dog. Again, they all have different personalities. She has her cape on, she knows she's working right now. She is normally very, very social, wanting to go up and be best friends with everybody that doesn't make a good assistance dog, because they have to be able to focus on their client. So as far as training, they have been in training for about two years before they are actually placed with the handler, the school, the facility. Once they are placed with that facility, we're actually training the people, because the dog already knows what it's supposed to do. So we are training the person how to talk and behave, what the rules are, just like with kiddos, with dogs, consistency is key. So we want to make sure that all of the handlers are on the same board, they're using the same language, they're using the same rules, so that you get the best output in your facility.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions before we wrap up?
If we, if we were to approve it, how, what's the timeline? I mean, do you have quite a few dogs available, or is there?
I joke that our kennel is like an airport. I have dogs coming and going on a weekly basis. Really internally, the timeline is up to you guys. It's when you are ready, when you have gone through, identified the home handlers, gotten the liability insurance, done the fundraising, all of that. At that point, once you guys are ready, then we move into the matching phase where we do several in-depth, we do home visit, we do facility visit. We want to make sure that we get the right dog for the right facility, for the right home handler. The home handler's job is very important, because they don't just leave work, they bring it home with them. So we want to make sure that that dog is going to fit into their personal life in addition to the role that you want it to play at school.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate you. So this will be an action item in our October board meeting.
If I could, Dr. Cooper, I'd love to recognize Carrie for her hard work in this. If you know Carrie, you know that she is determined, and she's hardworking, she's tenacious. When she gets behind an idea, she, she makes it happen. She's done a lot of great things for the district, and I just really appreciate all of, all of your work for, for this already, thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks.
Our discussion item C is board representation on a new steering committee, bond steering committee.
Yep, I, we have an ad that will be in the Allendale Announcer that goes out on October 1st, and we'll be trying to seek community members. I've already had multiple, excuse me, members of our staff who have reached out about being on that steering committee. I'm looking at having the first gathering on Thursday, October 16th. And I think we should have at least two board members, if not three, who are willing to be on that. The goal would be to review the facility needs assessments that we've had done. We've had multiple done, and we will review those facility needs assessments. We've had information on costs. Want this steering committee to see the original information, you know, everything that was shared with us last time, anything new, new things that have been suggested since last May, and then start to take a look at, is there a proposal that we feel we could put together that the community might entertain? So it starts, you know, like I said, I'm gathering community members, once that ad comes out, we'll get more. And then we could figure out who our board representatives would be, that would be very helpful to me as I start to create my list of who's on the steering committee. I'm anticipating it'll take at least, at least two meetings, if not three, to work through that initial information, going through those facility assessments and looking at costs, and, you know, that's where you try to determine those things that you feel are most needed, that kind of thing, so. Just so we kind of know what that commitment looks like. Probably be a meeting every two to three weeks through October and November.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to be on there to help support a new bond proposal? Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll join the steering committee and work through it.
Thank you.
You have that team?
And yeah, if nobody else is, I will be on it, I was on it last time. It is a little.
That would be helpful anyway, because you already kind of know them.
Yep, so. Yep. So. All right. Well, thank you, Pam and Brandon, for stepping up.
Yep. We appreciate that. And I'll try very hard to make sure the whole board is, you know, fully informed about the progress of the steering committee. So for those of you not actually on the committee, you'll get lots of information.
All right. Then we go into, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to go into closed session at 6:50 PM. For...
Motion by Anna, support by Tanya.
I think the motion has to have the purpose.
The purpose of discussing an employee conduct issue that completes the discipline. Thank you, George.
Roll call vote?
Discussion.
Discussion on that? Everybody's okay with going into closed session?
DeYoung?
Yes.
Paris?
Yes.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move into closed session. The board will be going across to the main office conference room. You're welcome to stay. When we come back, we have one action item that we'll be going through. Just a reminder for anybody staying in this room, the live stream stays on, and the microphones could be hot. So just, just keep that in mind if you're staying in the room, and we'll be back shortly.
We'll move back into open session at 7:35. Can I have a motion to approve funding for free breakfast?
I make a motion to approve funding for free breakfast and free lunch.
Support.
For all students through October 31st, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Liz, support by Anna, or yeah, Anna. Dr. Cooper.
Yeah. As we've talked about, you know, we're still kind of disappointed because the state has not come through with a budget for us yet. Creates a lot of uncertainty for our families around the free breakfast and free lunch programs. I did call around locally, only about half the districts have made a decision, the others are just kind of riding it out right now. Several of them indicated that they are covering free breakfast and lunch through October. Hamilton, Sagatuck, were two of them that I can think of off the top of my head. I will tell you that Hudsonville let their families know about 10 days ago that they were not going to. So come September 30th, if there's no new budget from the state, which I know there won't be, they will not be providing it. So it's kind of, I don't want to say all over the board, I definitely think there are more districts who have committed to October than who haven't. I believe some districts have committed for the whole year. That would not be my recommendation. I still believe that there's money in all three proposals, House, Senate, and governor's proposals, for the free breakfast and lunch program. So I still think there's going to be some type of dollars there. But I think if the board is willing to make that commitment through the end of October, it gives our families plenty of time to prepare themselves that if nothing, if the money doesn't show up come November 1st, they're on the hook. And as we talked about last time, the cost would be approximately, not knowing exactly how many kids would take advantage, somewhere between, I believe, 65,000 and maybe 75,000 at the very highest end. Some of those dollars could come out of the food service fund. So for students who are free, they would still be free. For students who qualify for reduced, we could take those dollars out of the food service fund, that's an allowable expense. But any student who doesn't qualify for free and reduced, we'd have to pay for that out of the general fund.
Do we have, or have we put together, have you put together a communication plan to make sure that there's good awareness for the parents who, or for the parents of the students who will not?
So if the board decides not to tonight, I will send an email out immediately to our families saying, hey, just a heads up, we still don't have a state budget, be prepared for October 1st. And then we do have our Falconer, which will go out on October 1st to all of our families, our monthly newsletter, and it will be in there as well.
Yeah.
And then if it does get extended, same thing. We could, if it does get extended, same thing. I could send something out immediately saying, hey, just to let you know the board has decided to cover this for October. Pay attention to what's happening in Lansing because it's not going to go beyond October 31st. And then we could put that in the Falconer, and then we could ask our building administrators to include it in their weekly newsletters that go out.
Okay. Yeah. That was one question that I had, just making sure if we're going to extend it that 30 days, that we're doing the right things to make sure we're accomplishing what we intend to, which is over communicate, make sure that, that the parents and students are prepared. Is there a way that for the 30% students that will continue to receive free breakfast and lunch, that we can make sure that we communicate that to those students' parents as well?
Sure. Absolutely.
So that they know where they stand, you know, they're, you know, if there's, there's obviously a need, and we would want to, you know, have those, those parents concerned, you know, unduly. One thing that I'd really like to do is the free and reduced, it would be nice to make up the deficit for the reduced for the rest of the year. I'd really like to see us, you know, kind of talk about that a little bit, but...
Oh, for the rest of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we extend to the end of October and you decide to do reduced for the whole year, then we could do that at the October meeting. Well, thank you for that. Yep. Well, one of the things that this could do, quite honestly, is if you make a decision that we're only going to do this for October, we have families who don't fill out the paperwork. It's so frustrating. They qualify, but they don't fill out the paperwork because they feel there's a stigma, there's whatever, or maybe, you know, so if it's free breakfast and lunch for everybody, then they don't feel like they have to fill out the form. But if they know that this is going to end at the end of October, maybe they'll fill out that form. And the thing is, that not only is free and reduced lunch, but there are a lot of grants and other programming that they determine based on those free and reduced numbers. And so we need to get more parents to fill out those forms who qualify. And so I think, that's why I think it's a good idea to look at October 31st as a deadline. Anybody who's already qualified, or who's already filled out the forms will continue, like you said, if you want to give it, but maybe we can pick up even a few more families who qualify who just haven't filled out the forms yet.
Are those forms something that they can fill out online? Or is it, was it hacked, or were copied, or the student, for example? But I feel like that's, the parent can do it from the comfort of their form or hole.
I think they can. I'm almost positive it's online.
I feel like that, that...
Or it could be the other way, they might not be able to do it online. I'm the old, I'm the old folk that I would, I'd rather give the paper here, just give it to the...
I have something, like they check the grades online, they sign up for conferences online.
But I haven't gone online even to do that yet, right?
I feel like they did, because I think, I think Mrs. Brower put something in one of our Falconers that said about the free, free lunch, and then there's a link that you can follow to do it online.
Well, and I would say that I'd be in favor of the October 31st, because that also gives the parents enough time to see this coming, as opposed to, I mean, I feel bad, October 1st is next week.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah. I think I... I'm, obviously, October 31st, you know, but I think parents do have to understand it, you know, this is not the way it was before. So they need to know, hey, November, come November 1st, there is a possibility if the board doesn't approve extending it, they need to know, they need to be prepared. If, you know, if we would decide to go the other way and say, hey, we'll do the free and reduced, but they're, they're going to be responsible, bill the, for them to pay if we don't go further out, or if the state doesn't. That they're not just counting on us.
Yep.
Keep rolling it out, because at some point, we have other expenses too that we have to think about.
Yeah. I pay for my children's lunch all the way through.
Exactly. Exactly. So at some point, that needs to be, you know, also put out there that...
Yeah.
Be prepared come November 1st.
Well, is that, yeah, and if you eliminate it on November 1st, you're eliminating a program that they've had available for two and a half years, maybe three, this is like something that's been in place for 15, 20 years, you know? So people, wow, we've always done it. Yeah. We've always done it for 24 months. So anyways.
Any other discussion? Amy, this is a roll call vote, please.
Paris?
Yes.
Hendrix?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn at civil? Oh, public comment, I am sorry. That snuck right out on me.
Well, we do this at the end of the work sessions and at the beginning of the...
Nobody?
There is nobody on the list. Is there anybody who'd like to make comment at this? I'm Troy.
I'd just like to comment about the facility dog. I love that idea. I cannot say how much I love that idea. To kind of elaborate, also, two years ago, there was also a student at Evergreen that passed away that I think would have been a fantastic thing for that building to have that dog as well. I'd love for Evergreen to have one. I think it's a great start for Evergreen. And then second, maybe I misunderstood the discussion just now about communicating the food program, and I think, Brandon, you were kind of stressing, more communication is better. I think, I would like to see, recommend each building principal maybe send emails to all the parents, individual specific emails specifically talking about that. The Falconer is a great way to go, but not everyone reads it. I mention things I see in the Falconer to people, and they go, what's that? They have no clue. I know. To your heart.
I know wounded, yeah.
It, so I think, maybe it's overkill, but specific individual emails to each parent, a note, home and folders to every kid. Yes, it's a lot of extra work, but this is an important thing to communicate. I think this is definitely one of those situations where more is better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Anyone else? All right. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn at 7:46?
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:46.
Motion by Brandon, support by Tanya. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion pass. We are adjourned.